To the flag of the United States of America. To the civil public for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for all the many blessings that you've given each one of us. God, we thank you for the nation that we live in, the freedoms that we have, and those that protect those. God, we just pray tonight to this meeting as we discuss business for this school district. God, I pray that you would give us wisdom and help us to make decisions that are what's best for the kids. And God, I just pray that you would help this semester to finish strong. And God, I thank you for all the teachers and administrators and those who've given their life to educate kids. And God, I pray that you give them the strength to make it through the rest of this semester and get to Christmas and help them with all the distractions that come along with the holidays. And God, I just pray that you would just help us tonight, once again, as we discuss business for the district. And God, we just thank you for your son. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We call this November 4th, 2025 Board of Education Meeting.
The greatest part of evening, I think, are recognitions. And so first up, we have Huntsville Elementary.
Mrs. Hawkins couldn't be here tonight, so she's asked me to present at her place. So I'm going to read what she wrote. It is our pleasure to recognize Wyatt Stevens as our Student of the Month from HIS. Wyatt, do you want to come on up? I want to read to everyone what some of the staff at your school said about you, okay? Wyatt is a really exceptional guy. He's as smart as they come. He's respectful, conscientious, and responsible. I can't wait to vote for him for president. Wyatt is one of the most polite and respectful students I have ever had. He is always on task and willing to participate. Wyatt is a top-notch student who listens the first time and never backs down from a challenge. Wyatt is a go-the-extra-mile kind of kid. He works hard, challenges himself, and is quick to help others. He sets a great example inside and outside of school. Wyatt Stevens is a dedicated student at HIS who consistently shows respect toward both his classmates and teachers. He is known for his positive attitude and work ethic. His kindness, respectfulness, and commitment to learning make him a valued member of his school community. He always works so hard in school. He's a kind soul who is respectful to everyone around him. He's willing to help when needed and has a great heart. And lastly, this kid, wow, he is the pure definition for what it is to be an equal. Wyatt is a straight A student with a heart of gold. He is caring and kind. The younger boys look up to him as a role model. When he's around the younger kids, he shows great leadership skills. I've never heard any teacher say anything bad about him. Wyatt is an active member in the community doing Huntsville Pee-wee Sports, Spelling Bee, and Battle of the Books. Wyatt is going to grow up and do big things. I'll take a quick picture. If y'all just want to stand up and squeeze in.
Do we want family to come up and take a picture with him?
Yeah, family, come on up too. And mom. Oh, this will be great. I like this better than out there. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Perfect. One, two, three. Got it. Congratulations Wyatt.
Yeah, good job Wyatt.
So next, we'll have Watson Primary. All right, well, I would like to also present a Student of the Month for Watson Primary. This month is going to go to our second grade student, Abigail Hargis. This is a surprise to her, Ms. Abigail. Hey, I'm going to start by reading what Ms. Abigail's first grade teacher wrote when she recommended Abigail for Student of the Month. She said, "I had the privilege of being Abigail's first grade teacher. I knew very quickly what a special young lady she is. She has always had such an eagerness to learn and loves sharing her ideas. She is very eloquent with her speaking, which is a very rare trait at her age. Her ability in reading blew me away, and I've been listening to her read too, so I know what she's saying. She kept every day fun and interesting, and anyone who knows Abigail can attest to that. She is a natural-born leader, and I love that she is always able to see the best in everyone. I hope her light continues to shine bright, and I can't wait to see what she accomplishes in her future." This year, she's in Ms. Shepherd's class, and this is what Ms. Shepherd had to say. "Abigail works extremely hard every single day. This level of responsibility is a testament to her character and her desire to excel in her academic journey. Abigail completes her schoolwork diligently, listens attentively, and follows directions without being reminded. Her positive attitude makes our classroom a better place to learn. In addition, she is a student who treats others respectfully. She is kind, loving, and always ready to lend a helping hand, whether it's helping a classmate understand an assignment or playing with them at recess. Her caring heart and willingness to do what's right make her a wonderful example for her peers." Jordan in.
Yeah.
Jason, you coming up?
No, we'll get up there and get in the picture.
Congratulations. Do you want me? Yes. I want to crash your party. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Perfect. Congratulations. Okay, and next, we will have Huntsville High School.
When I got into this profession about 32 years ago, I found out quickly there are two people that you don't get on your bad side. You keep happy. One's a janitor, and two is the secretary. We make sure we keep our secretary happy. We're celebrating our secretary, Dana Phillips, tonight. She's in her 21st year of serving in our district, which means she's been holding the place together longer than some students have been alive. She's been a very professional little school secretary, and since 2022, she's been the heart and the backbone of the high school. Nothing happens without her. She's the person who somehow answers the phone, fixes a printer, and helps a student all at the same time. You can see her back and forth all day. That's why she turns the air down. Is that why you turn the fire off? We freeze together, then it's fine. She's a big Office fan, if you've ever watched The Office. So for Dana, as Michael Scott would say, would I rather be feared or loved? Easy, both. I want people to be afraid of how much they love me. We don't fear you. Well, we do a little bit. Especially if somebody forgets an absence, then they might fear you a little bit. But we absolutely love and appreciate you. You're the backbone of the school, the reason things work, and the one who makes everyone else look like they know what they're doing, especially the principal. Huntsville High School wouldn't function without you, and we're all better for having you. Thank you for your years of dedication, your patience, and your sense of humor. We can't do this without you, and we wouldn't want to.
Get up here with him, Mike.
Very well said.
One, two, three. Got it. Okay, next, we have a representative for St. Paul's School.
I can hand it to him over there. Paula.
I thought you'd appreciate one trip.
Yeah, I would.
He's due in ten minutes.
I'm really not much of a public speaker, so if I kind of stutter and stutter around a little bit, forgive me. It's my honor to represent Bruce in presenting Katasha Yon West. So Katasha, you want to come up here with me, please? I want to read you what Bruce had said about her. Katasha Yon West is an invaluable member of our St. Paul campus community. Known for her unwavering dedication, genuine care for others, she consistently goes above and beyond to lend a helping hand to anyone in need, often stepping outside of her regular duties to ensure the campus remains clean, welcoming, and well-cared-for, especially when others are away. Her friendly spirit and warm smile brighten the day of every student she greets, creating an atmosphere of kindness and respect throughout our campus. We are deeply grateful for Katasha's hard work, positivity, and commitment. She embodies the heart of our community, and we appreciate her more than words can express. This is Katasha Yon. You want your husband and kids up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, y'all get to start with.
Okay, now I can't see you, Ms. Whitney. Can you peek over? It's over. There we go. One, two, three. Perfect. Yes, and then our last one for tonight comes from our Maintenance Department. Oh, Huntsville High School, I'm so sorry.
Yeah. All right, well, it's my honor to give this award to Jeff Patrick. Jeff, come on up. All right. Jeff consistently demonstrates a student-focused attitude, always striving to do what is best for our students, followed by the needs of our staff and visitors. He continually puts the needs of others ahead of his own and is always willing to step outside of his regular responsibilities to ensure students receive the support they need. Jeff's dedication extends beyond the school. He gives back to his community by offering martial arts classes, helping to build confidence and discipline in others. His commitment to service is evident, even when the sheriff's deputy calls him in the middle of the night to come handle a fire alarm on the campus. Through his actions, Jeff exemplifies true leadership and promotes positive culture within the school and the community. We are truly blessed to have Jeff Patrick as part of our district's team. Congratulations. You want me in it too? Yeah. Let me give Steve a break this time.
One, two, three.
I guess I do. Jamie, you think she can say it in the?
Okay, and then sorry, the final photo is from Huntsville High School. We are excited to recognize our instructional facilitator, who has been with the district for many years. I have not, and Sarah has not, so we can only speak to the few times or the few years that we've had her with us that I know she's said phenomenal things even before that for several years. So we're excited to recognize Teresa Rutledge.
So there were several nominations for Teresa, and so we're just going to read what teachers have said. Very short and sweet, I would like to nominate Teresa Rutledge. She is always willing to help when needed in any area needed. Another teacher said, "I would like to recommend Teresa Rutledge. Ms. Rutledge has dedicated many years to our district. Her passion for student growth is exemplary. Her commitment to the success of all students and helping her fellow faculty members rise to the occasion and meet every student's needs is truly appreciated. I have personally benefited from her instructional leadership and her assistance in realizing the best practices in my own teaching. Basically, she makes me want to be a better teacher. Never being just content but giving us goals towards which we can aspire, I also appreciate her interaction with students. She makes it a goal to acknowledge students and engage with them in fun and specific ways." Another nomination said, "I want to shout out Teresa Rutledge for this month's recognition. She has embarked on a never-ending quest to pull the best from teachers and students. Her support in the learning around campus is evident through the work she's done with data, direct coaching, and small group interventions in ELA and MATH. You should see that, by the way. She is always asking, 'What else can I do to get us there?' She truly embodies the ideal that these are our kids, and their achievement is our responsibility. Give her a clapping noise maker and Bluetooth speaker, and she's unstoppable."
I would personally add that she has really stepped up with helping our content teams when needed with building our guaranteed and viable curriculum. And a huge part is that this year, we've had our elective teachers select a literacy standard as one of their priority standards. She was willing to help them choose one that works best with their content and help create assessments and a data wall to track if students are learning what they're teaching. She truly has a laser focus on student achievement and is a great asset to our team. I've watched her build relationships with students who in particular have troubling backgrounds and can see her hug them each day and check in on their well-being. Every morning, she's out walking around with her fun plastic clappy hands, greeting students with a warm smile, and has been taking her new Bluetooth speaker outside to create a fun environment for students to be at our campus. Our entire campus is truly making this place where students and staff alike want to be, and she is a part of why. We're grateful for everything she does and are proud to recognize Teresa Rutledge."
I like to say how proud I was to be her teacher. And I've heard be my facilitator and be my teacher. And she was an amazing one. And I taught her. She was my first grade teacher.
Up next is the Board of Looks, the Consent Agenda. If anybody has any questions, we'll try to entertain those. And the next one, out of the superintendent reports, a used bus purchase. And I see Perry's not here, so we're very fortunate of all. So, and Tina might be able to correct me on the amount, but Perry has a connection, a good connection with Rogers School District. And we were able to get two buses. One's the larger, the 72-passenger with bucket seats. It's a nice job. That and a handicap bus with a lift. Both of those, the second one, the handicap bus, the lift bus, had a new engine put in it, but it only had like, it's under 10,000 miles on it. And of course, these are street-driven, not on dirt roads or anything, so we got a huge bargain. So to make that happen, of course, I didn't want to call an emergency board meeting, and plus, they're used. So for that, you don't have to did those out or anything. Just make a straight purchase. But I wanted to let y'all know and have y'all approve that somewhere in the minutes.
Five left. Steve, make all favor.
And for action items, A is policy updates, and Paula's going to talk about that really quick.
Yes, the only action tonight really is going to be to give you guys a 30-day read on this, and then we'll, you know, put it on there. and then we'll, you know, put it on the agenda for next time. But there were four different policies that had updates due to changes in law and rules and regs, and they're kind of lengthy. But I included them, the additions is in red in the policies, so you can take the next month to look over those. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out and let us know.
We need a motion to table that for next month if we could.
Can I get a motion to table it? You got it?
Okay, item B, a Christmas bonus of five hundred dollars for each employee. So, you know, learning, being new here, and for our staff to kind of get to know any kind of thing. And I'd mentioned it before, I think, to y'all. At least in my mind, I did. So we put that up to vote for the staff, the surveys, and we also will talk to both PPCs. I went and talked to one, Matt said, talk to the other. And because to get that all incorporated and to pay those out, one, we wanted to get their input. And so they, the vote was pretty close, but the majority was the Christmas bonus, but with the understanding that we let them know, you know, maybe a possible signing bonus, you know, contract time that could be larger. And I get it, you know, we, they have ways to comment. And so there was, you know, some statements of, you know, if I knew how much they were, I could, you know, give a better vote. And so that's probably my, I didn't communicate that to them good enough of, I don't know right now, because where we're at in the budget and in the fiscal year. But they approved it, and the five hundred dollar bonus. And they also approved to waive the ten-day period for the PPCs to discuss that and determine that, and they totally agreed for me to present that to the board.
I get a motion to approve this one. Second one, are we all in favor?
Okay, and so I don't want to throw Matt into the bus, but I'll kind of start if Matt wants to chime in. So we were notified that we were probably out of compliance in one area and with things. And so I then took the information that was presented to Matt and contacted an attorney. I wanted to get a legal answer about it. The attorney said, yes, we were. And this is all from formal law. And so other places I've been, we did it the same way we were doing things here with this issue. And I didn't know that we were out of compliance all these years. And so I'm glad that that was brought to our attention, and so.
Yeah, yeah, and I will say, like, we've reached out to the State Department as well, and there's conflicting thoughts on that. The State Department says, yes, we can do it the way we've been doing it, but attorney says, no, you really need to compensate somebody for doing. It's personal care is the issue. So our nurse, our RNs, need to oversee the personal care, train our people that are doing one-to-one and those types of things, and then they have to sign off on it. And then Tanya takes care of the billing for us, so. But I don't know if you want to say anything else to that. But we do feel like we need to compensate our RN that's doing that for us, so.
And I know I threw this in there late, but we did run it by the PPC committee, correct Matt? And then he blew. He's the master plan resolution, and I've got a couple notes, and I need to throw that in there too, but he's in the meeting with me, with Dr. Stein. And so basically, in my notes, in meeting with him, this will be all for the funding for, that will be in twenty-eight, that cycle, the matching from the state. And in May this year, we can find out information if we got approved for the last cycle of funding, which included intermediate, a new roof on it, and St. Paul roofing. And so it's for us to apply for the matching for twenty-eight. Matt, do you have anything else you want to tell me?
No, that pretty much covers it.
I thought they were. The middle school, we're up, I thought that was.
So middle school at St. Paul is the one that we had applied for partnership funding on, and we were approved for funding for the middle school at St. Paul and the intermediate roof. We find out in May how much, for sure, that funding is going to be, which it should be around sixty-nine percent of what they think it should cost to redo that roof. So, which is good, free, I mean, pretty much free money for us to do things that need to be done anyway, so.
The next one was pretty good, and I think I had mentioned it before that we talked about. It's for a change order for paving the baseball, softball, indoor workout area there. So there's parking there. It's in the contingency fund, which is, I think, a hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred thirty-one. So we have enough to pave that where it won't cost us anymore. It's already there. That's money we would get back at the end of building if we both got to pave it. But I suggest that we do, because the cost is a hundred seventeen, nine forty-six. So we've got plenty in that contingency fund to take care of it. Alright, Josh?
Yeah, always.
Sorry, they're interviewing my thing.
I like most people, don't we? So I think you guys probably have something in your folders. I sent it to Mr. Chalko four weeks ago. We are asking to be officially affiliated with this school district for our homeschooling. Our song given fish in the near future is going to require that for us to, you know, stay a part of the trap shooting organization that we've been with for, what, probably close to twenty years? Originally, we were affiliated with the homeschool school district with when Hodge was here. You know, he passed, and then I don't know what happened with the affiliation after that. But now we're asking to be affiliated again. I don't think it's going to be required this year for the upcoming season, but I think it will be in twenty, I guess, twenty-seven season. So we're just trying to get ahead of things, so. You guys have any questions?
Make a motion, alright? Second class seat, all in favor?
I printed all this out.
Made it too easy.
Yeah. Alright, for information items, we got our academic achievements report.
Yes, so I prepared a thing in your packet. There were some questions on the reasons for student transfers. And so Janine sent me a spreadsheet that pulled that information, and we, I included that as well, if you wanted to see each individual reason. This doesn't have student names on it or anything, but it does have the information that was filled out when they requested the transfer. So thirty-two percent of them, so almost a third, were convenience issues. They actually lived closer to a different school, or a parent worked in another town. About thirty-two percent of them moved into the district but wanted to continue at their previous district, which is understandable. Ten percent were the long day and the four-day week they did not like. And then ten percent didn't give a reason. Eight percent were various other reasons, special needs, personal reasons. There were only two I saw that said academic reasons, like curriculum or resources, only like two of those, and one about athletics. And then seven percent said they were going to be moving into another district soon, so they wanted their student to go ahead and start school there. So that was kind of the breakdown. And you can see the dates. That goes from July of twenty-four up until this point in the school year. Do you have any questions or anything else you would like me to pursue on that front?
Well, I don't know if it's worth even pursuing. I just was saying, so it's still like, if they go to homeschool and it doesn't, somehow those people aren't making this list?
Right, I don't think so. This is to transfer to another district.
Well, they take the homeschool, you don't have to give a reason why you're doing it. Why, but we don't even know how many we lost in homeschool.
I think, yeah, we do.
Yeah, we can get you.
We can get you that.
I'll have it with me. Yeah, they just, on the form, they don't have to give a reason.
But if you're interested in just how many we've lost to homeschool, we can find that information for you, for sure.
Thank you, Paula.
Yes, welcome.